Okay, I've gotten the nod, right? Then we can get started, great. So we will go ahead and get started. Thank you for being patient with us. We will go ahead and start our work meeting with the review of this evening's agenda. Any items that we need to make adjustments to for today?
Mayor, we do have one. This is a recommendation from Alan to move, what number is it Alan? Two point six and his and his budget discussion closer together.
They'll be a joint discussion.
So two point six and three point one, right Alan?
Yep.
So if we can maybe move two point seven above two point six, I think that would work out just fine.
Okay, any objections? Uh, any other items that we need to make adjustments to? Okay, any future agenda items that we'd like to discuss?
Um, I do have one. Um, I met with, as I indicated, um, a couple of developers that are interested in developing a piece of property out in in my area. Um, on our master plan, it's it's agricultural, yes, it's house, but to be low against the agricultural, not residential. But our A two five zone, our eight point two five, we come through weeks here. It's like, if we're if we're wanting ten thousand square foot lots as a minimum, but then you have a ten thousand square foot lot in agricultural zone, what can you really do agriculturally with a ten thousand square foot lot? So so I think that we need to have some really hard discussions on that. I think it's it's prohibiting some things from moving forward, which is fine if that's in the intent. But I think we really have to be aware of what our intent is on that. Um, the maximum is one point eight, so if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, that would technically, you could put four houses on, but our our maximum without bonus density is one point eight. So then it's like, and I assume that the intent is so that you could have a bigger lot and then maybe a smaller lot, those types of things. But I think we really have to have better clarification on that zone. I know as I talked about it, nauseam in in different, you know, councils in the past and things like that. But we've got to decide truly, because if it was an R one ten, then it's like, okay, then you come and you put ten thousand square foot lots, which Steve makes reference all the time, we need these quarter acre lots throughout our 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 community, which is fine. But then the question is, are we truly trying to preserve some agriculture area in our community? Or are we just willing to let that go to ten thousand square foot lots? We we need to have a clear understanding of what our vision is for that area, in my opinion, and and make the zoning in accordance with that, rather than just saying, you know, this is what it is. And 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 it needs to be realistically something that they could do with our agriculture.
So as as a possible suggestion on how we start that, would it be helpful to have staff come to a work meeting and present what exactly the A G zone uh allows and doesn't allow, so that we have a better understanding of what might be prevented? Because I remember when they went over that, you know, they they took some of that into consideration. You could have smaller animals, but not bigger animals. And I think it'd be helpful maybe to start that conversation by having staff make a presentation, if you're comfortable with that.
I I agree. I I'm gonna defer to Michael, I I talked to him walking up the stairs and and I think that we've got to iron this out.
It's been a difficult tool. I think it worked well in the past when the city had larger areas that were being combined and you had an opportunity to do some clustering. But that's just not the type of development that we're seeing in our eight point two five potential zones right now. And and the quarter acre uh minimum is really under, you know, it's really common, eight point two five, it's a quarter acre. But then when you add in the density structure, it's just confusing and frustrating for everybody.
Let's uh let's put it on work meeting.
Is there is there an indication from what they would like to do out there versus, I mean, that maybe for us to specifically look at as as we're, or are they just looking at what the minimum lot size is?
Well, for sure, if you're a developer, you're gonna look at what's the maximum number of lots you can get on a piece of property. And if you're if your property under twenty to sell, you're gonna look at the same thing, right? Because the more lots it can get, the potentially higher value of your of your property and things like that, which is totally understandable. The question is just philosophy, really. And do we as a council really intend on preserving some agriculture in Harriman? Or we wanna just go completely residential and just kind of permanent? It's a philosophical question that we need to answer.
I think a portion of that ties into the conversation around tonight about flag lots and how they get developed right. And if you have a acre property and you do a ten thousand square foot lot and a thirty thousand square foot lot, what happens in the future? How do they infill? Those kind of things, I think it all ties in, so that's a great conversation.
I think it's just assigned for me that after five and a half years, when these things start circling back around.
Assigned for what, Derek?
Because we we tried to do this, um, I think before any of you were here, my first couple of years. And I think we were that close and we had turned into kind of a political issue. One of the council members at the time had land that they were developing and didn't like what change would do. So it needs to be done. I was frustrated that we didn't get it done then. Um, my question is, is this particular property already zoned A two five or is this a zone they're considering?
Yeah, it's an it's an A one. They would have to bring it to the council and get it and request a rezone, but.
So they could go with something else, but it that's probably what is designated on the agenda.
Yeah. Um, general plan is A two is A two five and and pretty much everything that's developed out there has gone A two five. And so it's like, when you look around, it's like, hmm, but everybody's getting bonus densities, can they turn the extension plan into park? Can they go, you know?
So they combined a couple of properties?
Yeah, so so it's just, we just need to think that. And and I understand it changes with every new council, everybody has different opinions, everyone's well.
As long as we don't talk about chickens again, huh?
I'll wait for somebody to bring them up. Okay, any other items we want to put on the future agenda?
I want chickens.
Well, in Sandy, there are pets, we can have them.
Uh, one point three leadership task list review, any items that we need to specifically address with staff? Okay, if not, we will get right into our meeting with two point one, discussion of the structural organization of Harriman City Volunteer Boards and Commissions meeting.
All right, council, so in your packet you had a, I think, a decent staff report, as well as some red lines for your reading enjoyment. But what I did was just made some bullet points to go through and the changes that we're recommending. And then hopefully we can just have some comments from you as to the direction that I feel like we're heading and how you maybe wanna sway that direction a little bit. So to begin, um, staff are recommending the removal of the Community Garden Committee and the Be Ready Harriman Committee. Um, I've got Chief Carr here to speak to the Be Ready Harriman Committee if there are questions on that, as emergency management and Be Ready Harriman now falls under H P D. Um, and then the Community Garden Committee, they just don't meet enough as a committee and they don't report back. We just feel like those are two items that could be remit, or two committees that could be remit from the title. So happy to hear any discussion or questions on those two themes.
I would just ask on the, I certainly understand and and agree on the um garden committee. Um, on the Be Ready Harriman Committee, I mean, obviously, you know, that's, we've we've been through the ebbs and flows of of that committee and those things um over the past many years. I guess just, I would just like to hear what I guess a current update is of, I guess, the functionality of of that committee and what, under under H P D, what I guess the the vision is of how to utilize it and what the future of that looks like in order to be able to really make the best decision on moving forward.
So, as you know, emergency management got moved into the police department. As we looked at it, we determined that the Be Ready Harriman really is kind of cert light, right? It it's not a certified group of people who necessarily anything. It's more of a a functioning um group that either looks for information, gathers information, or goes to events and hands out information, right? And they'll request from us from time to time, information on how they might use drinkable water during a disaster, those kind of things. And and so what we've determined is, it's less of that certifiable function of of uh emergency management and it's more a a smaller working group that now that it's under the umbrella of a division commander, we feel like it could probably be taken out of that that area. Does that make sense? So the idea then is to move this forward. Again, it's like anything else, we gotta get the word out that it's up and functioning and and it's running well right now. Uh, we did three cert classes on the cert side, uh, and we're getting the Be Ready Harriman word out again. So things are functioning well, it's again, it's in infancy, but it's it is, it's probably designed under the twenty thousand population model and now we've tripled that and put it under uh under a division commander. We feel confident that we can run it without necessarily it being a committee that is authorized by.
Who has oversight of that program?
Brian, it's a, yeah, it's under violent.
And we did recently hire an emergency manager who has a wealth of experience.
Yeah, so.
In the management.
And we'll bring Mike Reed in, he is ex-military, he was over emergency management in Hawaii. So during the last volcanic episode there, he ran in Hawaii. So we were fortunate to get him, he's a resident.
But what's he gonna do when it snows?
There is snow in Hawaii, I hear. Uh, he he is a wealth of information, again, he's a part-time employee. Um, he's the emergency management coordinator, as you've heard Tammy say in the past, new state statute requires us to have an emergency manager in place in the city. Uh, that is is Brian, um, and his coordinator is Mike Reed. So we really are making some great bounds. Emergency management is one of those tough things, right? You don't need it until you need it. And.
And then you need it.
Yeah, and it's hard to look at those dollar bills and go, well, nothing's happening, but then you have an earthquake, right? You have to be able to perform during that time. Um, we're in a very good position uh to continue with cert certifications and our Be Ready Harriman is up and running and and functioning well. So we're in a good spot.
So is it is it fair to say that that the responsibilities that the Be Ready Harriman was trying to fill can now be either pushed to the cert team or be communi- be a communication arm of our emergency preparedness group?
Um, less pushed to the cert team, but more managed by a full-time employee, a division commander and a and a part-time coordinator. So we're we're in a good spot to run it, I think, as basically a unit in the police department. Yes?
Question, um, when you say, I think I was designed at the twenty thousand population level, because when it when we first moved here, we were part of our block captains, you know, you had, we were trained on with our little ribbons, how to go out and tie things on and things, those kind of things happened. And it really gave a lot of peace of mind, really, to the to the community that we were in anyway, that that you had this organization from tiny block captains all the way up to people reporting back and forth. Are you saying that maybe that when you hit sixty plus thousand, you outgrow that and you can't manage it at that level? Or is that still something we're gonna try and work towards?
So it's about outgrowing, but we just need to uh increase our function and our ability within the program, right? Because we 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 keep the same model, you still have logistics, you still have cert, you still have all those things, it just needs to be bigger, right? And as that gets bigger, it's a span of control issue and we need more people to manage that. It becomes difficult because the longer you go between an incident, the the less people are interested in doing it, right? And they start to fall off. So it's our job now to keep them interested regardless, and we do that by running tests and doing tabletops and those kind of things. And we're going to do that again, and and you'll recall that we used to do large-scale tabletops at Butterfield.
Yeah, we used to, every once a week, everybody had a call-in on their little block. That used to be technology, uh, you know, it gets just to record in and and have that communication. So it'd be nice to have something like that.
And we have ham radio operators and and other branches that, once we can get a very large-scale event planned, a testing event planned, I think we'll see that our pieces are, we're we're always there, they just were a little dusty.
Okay, awesome.
So we'll be there.
Perfect.
And and I hope to get that within the next year, that we'll start to see a very large event. But we're gonna plan it in small scale first, right? So we'll we'll test our branches and then we'll test the whole program.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, anything else on that first point? Okay, next, we recommend an application process and background check for all council appointed boards and commissions. Any concerns or questions about that? We'll of course bring that application back to council for approval with updates.
What's the fiscal note on that?
Twenty-nine dollars per background check. And are we paying for that or are they paying for that? Um, staff recommend background checks for all volunteers, specifically those working with minors or those with vulnerabilities.
Yes.
Yes. Um, so this one is one that we'll probably need to talk about a little bit. In the terms compensation and benefits section of each of the titles, which are all consistent, staff recommend a size of three to seven members to sit on a board. This recommendation does not limit the number of volunteers, just the members of the board that make formal recommendations. How do we feel about those numbers?
So everybody can still participate and so that there's only gonna be a a board that make the decisions. They receive input from everybody on the committee, the board makes the decisions rather than, I think, it's.
And you had three to seven? I know that sometimes we have, we have those, you know, we get more, better participation on some committees than others. Um, again, as we've grown and and had, obviously significantly, we're more sixty. Are we still seeing some of those committees that struggle to have participation on those? And if so, which ones are those? Because obviously, you know, you say three to seven, I think, obviously, in my mind, it'd be nice if we could just standardize and say, five, seven, wha- whatever that number is. But again, I don't wanna hamstring a committee if they don't have enough to to meet that that qualification. So what committees are the ones that we?
So this year, it's been the history committee, although we've been able to get more interest after the fact. So we've got a few more volunteers that are serving there that didn't sign up beforehand, right? Before everyone else was appointed. But that one has been a problem in the last few years. Um, I think it will get bigger as we start working on more historical projects in the city. So I think there will be a a revived interest in that. Um, but I think that one's probably the one that we see the most.
And I would say on some of our committees, we have a lot of volunteers, but they don't take a lot of assignments. Um, and so I think that is something that we need to work with our committees on, that if you're gonna be on the committee, you do have to take on assignments.
Something.
Um, otherwise, it's not really a committee, it's just staff.
Yeah.
Executing everything, so.
Another benefit of having a range is that if you have, required to have seven people, but you're only getting three showing up, you don't have a quorum of that body, really to convene a meeting. I mean, nothing's prohibiting them from meeting, but you're really not able to take, you know, any action that you've been authorized to take against the duty. So if you draft it such that it says at least three, but no more than seven, and you have within your rules procedures that require people to attend a certain number of times per per month or per year, and then they're automatically removed if they don't show up, you're able to control that that number a little bit more so that you can have a quorum within those committees.
I think the range makes sense, if you have one where nineteen people show up, then you want too many people to make decisions to one of seven. If you have one that there's only three people involved, then it's a good minimum.
Okay, we'll go with three to seven.
Just a question about that. What role do council members play who are assigned to those committees?
I'll let you all discuss that, um, because we don't have a council member that is assigned to each committee. Um, I feel like it's more of a liaison role.
Okay.
Just like staff, I mean.
I think it's, my opinion is, is we should be there as support, advisory, liaising back to the rest.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, we make enough, we we have enough input on enough decisions in the city, I. I wouldn't be lucky to to.
Oh, you know, stuff all the time.
To influencing committee that we may set up.
I I agree.
But we can certainly offer the input and support and things.
I would agree, I just didn't see that codified that way. And I wasn't sure if there was an expectation that if committee wanted a council member to serve on the board, I would rather us step away from that, so.
Um, staff recommend the chair of the committee be appointed by the mayor with advice and consent of council. I'll have some discussion on this, but the reasoning behind this is because a lot of times when we get in those meetings, it's the committee saying, well, I don't wanna do it, you do it, I don't wanna do it, you do it. Or then you sometimes have that really passionate person that wants to do it all the time. So you kind of have this, um, it's an interesting dynamic with our committees. And we have some very good chairs, but I think that, you know, sometimes there are dominant voices in the room that tend to um put their voice forward more than others, so. Any thoughts or suggestions on that? You could also just have the, like we're doing right now, where the committee just elects a chair.
Can we have the committee nominate the chair?
Sure.
And then have it done by the mayor with advice and consent of council?
How does that work?
Or?
I definitely like the idea of having the the committee have have a say in it. I think that, again, there are those that, you know, that sit on committees that, whether it's they recognize certain qualities or leaderships in an individual and and look to them, but again, to allow the body that is really doing the work and making the decisions in there to, if there, again, I guess, is potentially one that dominant wants to be in that, that the other members have some say in that. I think that's a good policy.
I guess are we creating a problem to solve by by doing that, or should we just allow the committees to do exactly that? Talk amongst themselves, elect somebody and move forward? Are we seeing a problem with that? Are we seeing?
Not.
You mean with it having to come to the council?
Yeah, exactly, I still wanna have to create a, you know.
Yeah, if they're going back to the last comment, if they're volunteers and it's their thing, let it be.
Let them go.
Yeah, that's how I I I feel about it.
I would think.
Let me let me play devil's advocate just for a second, not necessarily advocating for this, but as a point of consideration. They're not just ad hoc citizen committees. These are something that we're officially having discussion about signing their members, their reporting to the council. These are, these are, you know, delegated, for lack of a better term, responsibilities that the mayor and council are giving out to these organizations. I think that there is something to be said about um a formal appointment of a chair there that implies a a, for lack of a better term, an implied authority there that's assigned by the mayor and and the council. That gives them authority to conduct the meetings a little organized, to actually um almost be empowered that way, rather than saying, do what you guys want, right?
I'm not saying that they that they wouldn't have one, but to let them nominate who they want and they decide who's the chair, vice chair, et cetera, and they still run it that way. That's why we are, we're setting up the rules. We would like to have these committees, but they're strictly volunteers and staff and council are just liaisons, here's the structure. When I say you guys do it on screen with Clinton, that if there's three people there, then I'd rather those three people talk about it. Okay, somebody needs to step up who would like to do it. Is there, if there's one person that's always dominating, and the two were like, no, we're sick of that, then they can choose someone else, right?
And as liaison, maybe that's that's what we observe, if we're seeing that there's a really struggle, this is really a problem, then we find that there is a problem with that and then we address it. But my my feeling is until you see that there's an issue, that what is going to be as well. They are accountable to us and they do report to us and you know.
It's not broken, don't fix it.
Solution, looking for a problem, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I agree, I think we let the, just let them decide and and of course, with that decision from the group comes, I think, some of those things that you talked about, Stephen, that is is and is the responsibility of that person to make sure that they communicate and have an agenda and and direct those meetings, so.
Do, I'm I'm totally fine with that. Do, in in order for them to serve the uh the purpose that we want, do we still need to, like, because we still approve the members of that committee, right?
Right.
So really, the only thing we're talking about is who is the chair of that committee? Okay, then I'm fine, yeah.
And just to kind of piggyback on that, we also recommend the remainder of the board positions be elected by the remaining body. So that would just go along with what we just talked about. We do have, we do not have a residency requirement, you probably saw that in your packet. Is there any feedback on that?
I think we've talked about this a little bit before, and that is, is that, again, if we have people outside of our community that are that have a passion about something and and are willing to to give up their time for the benefit of our community, I don't see anything wrong with that, I just don't want it to be at the expense of one of our community members that have a desire to serve. That that's my only, that's my only caution there is.
That is dominated by that.
Yeah, is that, I, you know, I think, I think as members of our community that are willing to serve in these various committees, that that there is some.
Preference.
Preference given to those and uh that we don't exclude our people. But again, those that are outside of our community that have a passion about something, that are willing to give their talents to us, wow.
And sometimes what's been discussed in the past is that sometimes there's maybe an individual that, say, lives in my country and they have expertise in a certain field and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Or riverman, right? That sort of stuff, and these these are not policymaking bodies, right? This would like, you have to remember, these are basically volunteer committees, right? To do extra volunteer, it's not like they're, they're not making decisions for the city.
Yep.
They're just making recommendations.
Recommendation.
Okay, um, we had some red line recommended changes to the Economic Development Committee. I'm gonna turn the time over to Tammy for that one.
Yes, so as you guys know, when that committee was created, it was years ago before we had an economic development department. So this committee actually served as the economic development department. Um, it was um chaired by Tony DeConze, who had experience in economic development, because Nicole Martin, who was the economic development manager at the time, was the only person doing economic development, but she was also the P I O, she was the mayor's assistant, and she was from the planning department. So she couldn't spread herself that thin and really invest in the economic development, so they created this committee. Well, this committee had a lot of authority. So what we're asking for is changes that remove the authority, but create that support role that they should be, where they're really helping us push out information regarding ribbing, cuttings, giving us input on businesses that we should potentially be seeking and just just kind of play more of that support role than the ones who make all of the decisions for economic development.
Is there currently economic development?
We do not have a current economic development, we have a couple of volunteers, um, but there is no actual committee.
Cause I knew there used to be one long ago, but in my time here.
Right.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, there is no current committee, so we do have some volunteers, um, and so
That one I'd almost, I'd almost rather wait till you get the city manager on board and see how, what his thoughts are on organizing.
I still like the idea of a committee, but as far as the authority goes, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
I think.
Yeah, it's just removing the authority.
Yes, 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 remove the authorities, please.
Okay. Um, we did have some recommended changes to the Harriman Trails Committee, which just added three words to section two, seven, two E and F, pending city approval. Uh, I don't know if you all saw that or have any comments on that?
When when it says city approval, or is that staff approval or is that?
That's going through the process. So if they wanna build a new trail, they have to go through the same process that everybody else does, so.
Helps us avoid some of the issues we have.
Some of the issues, putting it right next to somebody's backyard, yeah.
All right, and then we have, Mr. Boring is here. Sitting here behind me wrapping his U T V Utah shirt. Um.
Mr. Boring.
Mr. Boring.
Been living that down my whole life. Mr. Boring.
He's a very exciting guy.
Next is Mr. Boring, our finance director.
So Wayne and I met a few months ago and we've talked off and on since then, oh my gosh, it was February, it was more than a few months ago.
I know, it's a long time.
It's crazy. Um, we kind of went through and followed the template that we currently have and drafted a O H B committee for per um council's direction. So I was wondering if you had any comments or suggestions on that committee, the way it's drafted?
Let's get it going.
Hold, wait. Okay. Trying to think if there's anything else that stood out that I wanted to bring up. If you don't have anything else, then I think we'll just move along.
Okay.
Oh, wait, we do need to talk on the nonprofit, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
I was wondering if we were gonna talk about that.
We're gonna talk about that. Chase, you wanna?
So this is something that we brought up almost a year ago when we initially talked about the dog park. And we had kind of bounced around, there was no definitive decision about what to do or direction from the council. Um, as we've looked at this, we've, I've talked with outside council about setting it up. They've explained the process to us, said that it's really pretty simple to set that up. They would do it all. I think there's some safety in having outside council set up an entity that is not going to be connected directly to the city, right? If you recall, in our original conversation, we talked about a nonprofit would operate as its own entity. It would not operate under the umbrella of the city's authority or operations, it would be its own entity. So even though we would be setting it up, it would not be our nonprofit. That being said, we are able to set it up such that a majority of the board members are appointed by the city council. And that's not uncommon in nonprofits, that an outside entity appoints members to to a nonprofit. So that's something that we can discuss as we dive into this a little deeper, if that's your wish and desire, is to kind of go down that road, talking about what that board would look like, how many members of that board would be appointed by council potentially, and uh what their function would be. As I've talked with other city attorneys throughout the valley, most cities have this to one degree or another and what they do differs from city to city. Some cities have their nonprofits, and I say there, I mean, the nonprofit that assists the city, they have them run their town days equivalent, they run a carnival, they'll do a parade, or they'll do an art center. You know, there's there, some of them are very specific about what they do. So that'll be part of the conversation, you know, so if you have ideas about that, we can discuss them now. Do an art center, you know, there's there, some of them are very specific about what they do, so that'll be part of the conversation, you know, so if you have ideas about that, we can discuss them now or we can bring them back at a later meeting. And then the other item to discuss would be funding, most cities have an initial budget that they contribute every year to these nonprofits, whether it's a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, or ten thousand dollars. And that's particularly important as it gets off the ground, right, there are gonna be some administrative costs of them getting up and running, and we would maybe be contributors to that on the front end.
Just for to remind us in public consumption, why, why are we looking at a nonprofit?
There's, yeah.
Go ahead, Chase.
There's a lot of safeties in it from the city's perspective, and there's also a lot of benefits of having a nonprofit to the public. For instance, you can make a tax deductible donation to a nonprofit, but that doesn't apply if you were to come in and say, hey, I wanna donate five thousand dollars to the dog park, right? We've we've got restrictions about the type of gifts we can take as well as the city, where those donations. That's kind of where I'm going, is this all came up out because we have a lot of people are saying, we would we would donate money to the dog park or a specific thing, but. There's legal restraints on what we can actually, there there.
I mean, it sometimes leave a conflict, right, conflicts of interest.
Yeah. So there's a little more flexibility for people to donate money to a nonprofit, it feels a little bit better as well, you know, I think we all recognize that, that I gave a nonprofit some money and not just the city. And that that's not saying anything about about the city, it's just, you know, that's why nonprofits exist, is for that reason. Um, and so I think there's some, there's some optics that make it a little bit more palatable as well, um, but. Really depends on what you think we should do with that, because all of that will be part of the governing documents that get set up when and if we organize that nonprofit.
I think that, I think obviously like we've talked about previously and just now, that there's some advantages for just that reason we just talked about. Wendy, I, just with your um events background and stuff, guess I'd really like to know, from your perspective, do you think that there would be? How would you feel, do you think that there's a benefit to having a foundation that then again, may maybe we put over? We do that initial seed money and then let them take care of the fundraising and those other things as it relates to planning Herman Days?
Yeah, I I'm hesitant to some of it, to some events, I think for our town days, my preference would be for Herman City to do town days. For other events, there's that possibility that we let, you know, the rodeo committee or start working under this umbrella. Um, Moto X is another one that could probably move under this umbrella. Um, so, cause we have those private partnerships with those that could just function separately, but still with the city's looking.
Maybe it would be those separate functions, you know, I I know like the arts council would love to try and raise money for an arts facility or something, right? Would that all fall under the umbrella of this nonprofit, so it would be for, you know, uh, town events, it would be for the arts council?
Yes, that all depends on how we set it up, right?
Or all of it, or or would you set up a whole bunch of different nonprofits?
So, so.
And I think ideally, you would set up one with pretty flexible parameters and because you as the city council would have the authority to appoint members to that board, they wouldn't be operating under your direction. But they would be operating with the understanding that, hey, this is what the city is focused on, right, and this is what the city's interested in. At the end of the day, there's nothing prohibiting that from, that nonprofit from doing something like that with the arts or with trails or with any other thing, right? This is boring finance, I have to say.
I like him, you know, where I came from, we actually have two five oh one Cs that provided resources for our. Animal services, when it was originally created, we did an analysis and said, it will cost us this much dollars to do a regular animal shelter. It'll cost this much more to do a no kill, so we set up the five oh one C and said, if you can raise the money above and beyond our normal costs, we'll do a no, no kill. Then a second organization came in and on their own set up and just raised money for us, and so we actually had two of them, and that was for animals, they'll do whatever you want.
They. They also have a lot more access to grants than we don't have.
Yes, too.
That's a really good point.
Like artists and we get that.
That's a really good point.
And and, you know, there's no, nothing to tie this to this entity or community that's for me, I I was involved in a city. Where the city had made an annual ten thousand dollar contribution to a arts nonprofit, who had started to kind of adhere from what the city thought should be their direction. And they just said, great, we're done, thank you, we've been good partners and as you might expect, they came crawling back and said, actually, we need that money, we're sorry for the way these are planned now, you know. Yeah, you know, and ten thousand dollars is really not that substantial amount of money when you look at the scope of some of these nonprofits and the money that they deal with. But that that was just to highlight that we're not bound to this nonprofit, we can set it up, it'll be its own entity, we would still have the authority to appoint a certain number of members to that board at the end of the day.
It's so much easier to get money.
When I was involved in it, we did, city still ran everything.
Right.
We still ran everything, we just accepted donations from it, um, you know. To start with, they brought all the dog food and cat food and stuff, you know, provided all of that, they they did a lot of it with just donations here and there, very quick it was cash, you know, but.
And depending upon the size, I, you know, I think there's, for auditing purpose, I think there's safety in having it ve- very separate, their own legal counsel, their own financing. But like I said, that may take some money for them to get those administrative costs covered in the first place, so.
My experience is when you do the animals, you don't have any trouble getting the donations, that's an area.
Is that right Debbie?
Donations come very easily.
Um, I, in in regards to this, I I think we should move forward in in my opinion, and I guess that's what the council is probably feeling as well. Uh, I do, I probably would prefer making a separate entities that the that the city appoints at least a majority of the board. Um, I would be interested to see how the other members are selected of the board, um, because I think that would be, that would obviously affect how 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 that organization would be run. Um, but uh, but as far as setting it up, I think it's a fantastic idea, I think we should move, you know, with an appropriate amount of speed to make that happen.
We'll make some edits on here and bring back maybe a draft, some draft bylaws and.
Cause I'm thinking if we can get this up and running and and have something done before, I mean, it's, I know it'd be. Brush, but before the end of the year, we could get, we could start getting donations in this year, and the sooner we can get donations in, the more effective they're gonna be, even if it's a year before they start doing anything, like even just being able to accept the donations.
With the initial concept being for animals, right, animals, dog, et cetera, then we can.
Absolutely, but but flexible enough that they can expand, yeah.
We will see how it.
Just. Part of the original part of this was, there were a lot of donations regarding um Honda's passing, right? And just no real good way to receive and manage those funds, so, I think that's.
And then it's tied into the dog park, well, we do everything we wanna do, it's this much, but there's a lot of people that probably would donate, how do we separate that out? I think if we start with that, see how.
Good point, I like that.
There are entities.
The cost plus function of a nonprofit, right, that's a, that's an interesting thing to do.
Yeah. There are entities that can't make a donation unless it is a five oh one C three.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless it isn't a nonprofit.
Sure makes a lot better tax situation, right?
Yeah.
Especially for bigger donations.
So, does Steph have the direction they need on this item?
Yep, we'll bring it back.
Okay, awesome. Okay, um, we will then move on to item two point two.
Just real quick before we move on, um, Wendy, Steph, great, write up, I appreciate it, the stuff, rec- recommend, do not recommend, recommend, do not recommend.
Did you hear me yelling?
It was awesome.
Yes.
I sent some anger in there.
No, I I, no, not yelling, but I really appreciate that clarity of opinion from Steph, that was very meaningful, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for all your time and effort, appreciate your help.
Oh, thank you guys, let's get this thing started.
Very exciting from Mister Boring.
Are we good?
Yeah, more animals, just talking about.
All right, now we will move on to item two point two, uh, park ordinance update, dog park rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you get to stand up, you don't get to sit down.
Okay, we'll stand up. Does everybody have a copy of the rules and proposed rules and regulations, hopefully those included in the packet? Um, so as you probably have all seen, they're they're making some very significant progress on the dog park down the road here, so they've been laying some concrete. Uh, they're working on irrigation systems right now, so they're making some good headway there, um, so we wanna just make sure that we have some rules and regulations in place, as that is our uh first dog park here in the city, we're very excited for it. Um, so I'll just run through uh these rules and regulations, um, if you guys have any questions or comments or concerns with them, just go ahead and shout them out as we're going through. Uh, we have Debbie here from Animal Services that can help us answer some of those questions and anything legal, we'll probably lean on Chase a little bit here. Um, so we'll just start from the, start from the beginning and uh go go down to the bottom. So I guess section A, just some brief definitions, right, section B is just a brief uh legal disclaimer. Um, then we'll just get into each each one of these rules in section C, so I'll read through them, again, if you have any questions or comments, just shout them out as we go through them. So each park user may bring no more than three dogs into the park.
Just real quick, what, should we say at one time or at the same time?
Yeah, that's probably good, good clarification there.
I just, you know, somebody got four dogs, we don't want the last one tonight ever to be able to come.
Or to bring two in and go back out, bring in two more.
Yeah.
I'm I'm just, that's fine, right, just just no more than three at the same time, right?
Okay, thank you, um, dogs must enter and exit the park on a leash. Um, dogs must wear collars at all time. Park users are prohibited from using the agility components. Um, park users are.
That would be funny to see.
I'm sure we'll see that, I'm sure.
So, so.
Wait, read that, read that.
Is, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it from the front, uh, in the definition for that, is there, uh, thank you, um, park user separated from dog?
Yeah, read that again. Yeah, and you.
Yes.
Park users as a definition of the topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Parky dog, okay, all right, I'm, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't saying that dogs can't.
Yep.
Park users.
Okay, park users are required to quiet their barking dogs or remove their barking dogs from the dog park, a violation of this subsection may be charged as a nuisance under Herman Code.
So if your dog goes in there and plays and barks, you're in trouble?
What's that? Sorry, anything?
If your dog goes in and is playing and it barks a little, are you in trouble?
I think if if it's minimal barking, but if it's constant.
It becomes a nuisance, right?
If it becomes a nuisance.
Can we, can we say nuisance barking or excessive barking?
All the other dogs are covered in there.
I think it needs to have, has to have something in there, because there's gonna be dogs bark or playing, they're gonna bark, it needs to be some sort of a nuisance thing or something.
So.
Yeah.
Sure, of course.
The legal term that everyone loves to use is reasonable or unreasonable, right, and that's that's a legal standard that is just.
The unreasonable, it's just like.
It's easily identifiable, right?
Intentionally vague and um.
Yeah, we just add that in there, reasonable.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense actually, to have that distinction there.
Repetition. Okay, number six, aggressive dogs, including dogs who jump on other park users are prohibited. Um, number seven, dog defecation must be immediately cleaned up by uh persons or park users who is handling, harboring, or responsible for each dog within the park, and we will have dog waste stations there available for them. Um, at all times while the dog, wh- while in the dog park, children under the age of twelve must be supervised by someone over the age of eighteen. Concern there? Um, although.
Is there, is there a? Ratio? I just wonder if we're, not to be overly dogmatic here, pardon the pun, um. You know, if you have one person over the age of eighteen and there's seven people under the age of twelve, I mean, obviously they're entering at their own liability, but we wanna, we wanna not necessarily have those kind of problems, right?
And four dogs.
Is there a reasonable ratio there or something like that, I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna get overly regulatory or specific here, but.
You know what?
I'll monitor the dog games out there.
Well, and and the other thing I look at is, I don't see that very often, things like.
We would have to first.
Things like that, like, do we do that anywhere else where supervisions re- required, like, or is there a state code that dictates that?
Like the skate park.
I think we do, state park, skate park.
Uh, would you, the enforceability of it is tough, you have someone there all the time saying, how many people are with you, I think it would be difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It would be a hard.
I mean, I like the idea.
I just, otherwise I don't know why we have that.
No.
It's a liability thing.
Yeah.
But if you want, you want an adult there, so if like, so my ten year old wants to take my hundred and fifty pound ass, it's gonna be.
Okay.
Fair enough. Right.
I think we just leave the language that covers the big.
Right, he can control it, you want, you wanna make sure there's an adult there.
They, they.
Yeah.
Fair enough, right?
Although I know a lot of eighteen year olds that couldn't control it.
And then whatever that doesn't cover is covered by the disclaimer at the top, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Got it, okay.
So we're good with that one as is?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, number nine, all dogs must be at least four months old and have valid proof of up to date rabies vaccinations, I think it must be four months because that's when they're fully inoculated, right?
So that.
Is that correct, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay.
That, I like that, the way it's worded sounds like they have to have it with them at that particular moment.
They should have it on their collar, they should have it on their collar.
They should have it on their collar.
On their collar.
Should have it on their collar, okay, so, I don't have a dog, cause all my kids are allergic, so.
They have, if it's licensed, you have to have the rabies.
So can we, can we word that so that's that's included, that it has to be on the, on their collar, their vaccination information needs to be on their collar, whatever the state code is.
It should be covered in license. We have it under our animal code as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and it it does state in here.
Instead of the surrounding cities, correct?
Yeah, and it also states in here that all other, it isn't just these rules that apply, it's in section C, it says, in addition to general park rules and regulations, as well as other applicable laws and ordinances. So that would include the animal services code.
Okay, um, all all dogs must be spayed or neutered. Any concerns there?
Nope.
So anybody that has a dog that they use for breeding purposes would not be able to bring him to the park?
Oh, right. Right, and there are some, many of the dog parks that we we looked at, there are rules and regulations, they don't prohibit uh females in heat, I guess that's another option, but we opted to go with the spayed or neutered, um, route.
Why?
Neutral.
Okay.
Cause intact, if there's a few intact males, they tend to fight, be more aggressive.
Doesn't matter how well trained they are.
Right, and it does, there doesn't have to be an in heat female at the dog park, they can smell an in heat female for three miles, yeah.
That sure doesn't help.
But do you cover that under the aggressive thing already, or you feel like it just needs to be there? I'm not arguing, I'm just curious.
I I think they're both important, cause you could have an aggressive fixed animal, correct?
Right.
So they're not necessarily mutually exclusive.
I have my twenty pound sheep.
So are we good with that one now?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Females.
One hundred and forty pound dogs.
Your dogs.
Her, her. Okay, number.
It's a little.
Roman Harley.
Number eleven, bicycles, skateboards, rollerblades, scooters, and motorized vehicles are prohibited in the dog park. Only dogs and their handlers are permitted in the dog park, all other animals are prohibited.
Go for your chicken.
All dogs must.
I guarantee you somebody's gonna try to bring their cat and try to teach you how to run up and down those obstacles.
Yeah, this is a dog park only, dogs only. Um, all dogs must be licensed with Herman City or another city agency, or another city or county agency. As required that they are licensed.
Do you need to add that to the collar thing too, like with the rabies vaccinations?
Does that have to be on the collar?
Should they have a tag?
Yeah, they tag for proof.
Okay, hours of use of the dog park, seven.
One question about that, um, with the new dog park being set up and these new rules established, will we continue to? Use our policy of education first on that and provide them resources to get licensed, helping them to uh.
Great place to have a clinic, right?
It seems like a great opportunity for us to educate the public there, right?
For sure.
We always do operate on education first, we should have our first clinic at the dog park.
Well, maybe at the, yeah, maybe at the grand opening, ribbon cutting, we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's how you register your dog with the city, right?
License.
Yeah.
For sure. Okay, I'll.
They can actually post that, it's not a bad idea.
Giving them directions on how to license their dog when they go there.
Yeah.
Oh, we can, yeah, definitely do a vaccination license clinic on grand opening.
That'd be great, for sure. Hey, hours of use, seven thirty A M to dusk.
Oh, come on, midnight, let's do them all night long, that's what people love.
I do have a request about that, cause we let construction people start at seven, so why won't you let the dogs start at seven?
Because usually we wanna get our staff out there and make sure to do a sweep of the area first, make sure we don't have any.
So it's for our, it's for our ability to maintain.
To get out there and maintain it, right, um, I'm not sure what type of lock setup we're gonna have out there as well, and if our s- if our staff comes in at seven o'clock, it gives us some time to get um organized there at our shops and get somebody out here by seven thirty. That's kind of why we went with seven thirty, if that makes sense.
Snappy.
I know Chief has thoughts on this, um, is dusk the right word, or is there speci- or do we need to be more specific about that? I know there's like other terms, I know you've used before.
Dusk in December is four forty five and, and the fourth of July it's ten and a half, right, yeah.
Yeah, we did discuss that, no.
Half an hour after sunset, yeah.
So that, and that's that's my concern is if it if it's nine forty five at night and people are like, well, it's not dark yet.
But I'm not sure that we have sufficient lighting in in, in that area to facilitate use after dark, so.
Is it on Google, does it? Like, when you drive, isn't there a half an hour after sunset for you, for your lifeblood, isn't that the same thing, a half an hour after sunset?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we have that discussion about, was it parks?
It was about parks, it was specifically parks.
It was parks, it's a trail.
It was.
Yeah, it was about Blackridge, I think.
It was Blackridge.
It was Blackridge.
Uh huh.
It's always black.
But that's, I I.
Something that's black.
So my question is, is dusk the right wording, or do we wanna say seven thirty or or? So my question is, is dusk the right wording, or do we wanna say seven thirty or, or dusk whichever is later?
But again, you could utilize the park later in the, in the summer times, if you said at close time, at close time at seven thirty, then-
I'd say, or which one was later. What I don't want is in the, in the winter time, for it to be five o'clock and people are just getting home from work and they can't take, they can't utilize the facility anymore because it's, you know, dark.
Dark, it's dark.
Dark.
And again, yeah.
There's not gonna be lighting in the dark.
Right, the only lighting is gonna be on the street, there'll be street light in there, so the five thirty in winter time, there may not be ample, you know, sufficient lighting in, in the park to facilitate use, so that's-
No. Just the street.
And with obstacles and stuff in there, it becomes a libelous issue.
Some of it is a safety concern.
Okay, you guys have swayed me.
Makes sense, never to be in there with that.
If, if, if-
Or people go in there and do things.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you've swayed me. I'm, I am thoroughly swayed.
I'm just remembering, just having to walk like the rest of their parks. Cause they have all those other parks right next to it.
Jump down through here. Number fifteen, uh dogs must be in sight and under voice control of their owners at all times. Um no food of any sort, including for dogs, is allowed in the park. We don't want someone's dog getting into somebody else's dog food.
What about training treats?
That's a problem.
That would probably fall under this as no-
Okay, I just, that's, I, I assume that's gonna become a problem, cause I'm sure people are gonna be going there trying to train their animals, so but I'm-
Do you have any thoughts on that, Debbie?
It sets up resource guarding and potential fights.
I'm, I'm totally fine with your recommendation, I just wanted to ask the question, so.
Well, we got the animal expert here, so I defer to her, so. Let's see, smoking is prohibited in the dark dog park. Uh park users bring dogs into the dog park must be at least eighteen years old.
So a sixteen year old can't bring in?
An adult can't be sitting in the car of the park.
Right. We want somebody who's gonna be legally, legally responsible, correct?
Okay.
Um glass bottles and containers are prohibited. And section D just says, these rules shall be posted in a conspicuous place in and around the dog park, including at each entrance. E, the city may close the park for regularly scheduled maintenance, um which we do want to have two separate pods in that dog park and we, we not exactly sure how we're gonna manage the maintenance there. We, we foresee that it's gonna be a huge maintenance tour for us, so we're thinking right now that we'll close one half of the, the dog park down at a time, just to allow the grass to rest. They'd use the other side and then we'd swap, um swap sides and allow both sides to have a chance to rest there, so that's why we have that in there. Um.
Yeah, I'm like, is that not, I, I, I would like to word that, that the city can close the park for, uh at any time at its discretion.
Yeah.
We've had to do fidelisms and other-
Cause that's, and that's why is, is-
Close the skate parks on that.
Yeah.
So I, I, I appreciate that you put it in here for maintenance, but I would recommend that it be for all, basically at any time for any reason.
Right. Just looking back at the beginning, I thought we had something in there.
I think it's in our-
Park ordinance.
I think it's in the park, yeah.
General park ordinance.
I, I think it would be-
So I would actually just recommend striking that, just.
Yeah, it's already, it's already in came out.
In the park ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, city's animal control services or any law enforcement officer here is hereby authorized and empowered to enforce the provisions of this chapter and to apprehend transport and impound any animals and issue, and issue criminal citations to any park user found to be in violation of this section. And then any violation of the rules and regulations set forth in subsection C shall be an infraction, subject to a fifty dollar penalties penalty for the first offense and a hundred dollar penalty, penalty for the, for each subsequent offense. And obviously, we're gonna use the uh education method first.
Education.
That should, could be kind of-
Right, right.
Um on F, does this prevent our, our code enforcement officer from this, or from, from, or is that something we even wanna allow? Or do we want, wanna limit it specifically to animal control and police?
I don't know that we'd necessarily want code enforcement.
But-
It's a, it's a code enforcement.
It's a question.
The animal.
There's no right answer.
I think we would want to keep that strictly to animal, animal control and, and police.
I agree.
What about the ability to trespass multiple fences? Does that need to be added here, or is that just?
We could do that independent of this code, yeah. Don't you think Chief, we can trespass them? Well, the question, and this might be covered in some other subsection of whatever is, all too often you end up with somebody sitting out in the parking lot with a school of puppies.
Yes.
That's true.
Using this as a great place to s- to sow, give away sort of thing.
Yeah.
I would buy the law.
I would buy the law.
Do we, do we need to put something in here prohibiting sale or whatever, or is it-
Well, again, in our-
Well, it's not the parking lot, still considered part of the park, and every event, four months or less.
Right, we don't allow commercial-
Say, is it covered under or anything else? Yeah, let me look at our commercial bars.
We don't allow commercial-
Chapter seven.
Procedural.
There's a bar, just under our permission.
Right.
That'd be permitted by the city.
I'll let you guys book that up and research it, but that's-
Good question. Any, any additions to these that you guys may wanna make?
I think, I think you did a great job. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll make a few revisions and then I guess we'll bring it back to you guys at a future date for your fumble then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys.
Okay, uh we will move on to item two point three, uh fire station number one oh three, follow up discussion.
Get clicker?
Who's got the clicker?
I have a dream, I have a dream.
Gosh.
Mayor, council, thank you.
And it doesn't include this.
Doesn't include that.
Not include that anywhere.
It's alright, you can just wait. We, we wanna stay all night.
A lot of shifts.
Okay, alright, go for it, Monty.
Okay, uh thank you for the time tonight to bring this update to you. Um as you remember, uh in March, we brought the, the fire station information to you and what we're shaped, the current building is in and the recommended uh repairs that UFA was bringing to our attention. So tonight, we've uh spent some time narrowing those down and we'd like to bring these, uh these things to you. So we met with uh Larson Wood, the facilities manager for UFA and Chief uh Burchett and went through all of the different items that we had upon the list before that needed repairs. And we've narrowed it down to these uh kitchen cabinets, window replacement, plumbing repairs, um and then the kitchen appliances. The kitchen cabinets, uh we took a good look at those and we believe that we can just reface those, um which will save a substantial amount of money there. Figure we can do that for about fifty eight hundred dollars. Window replacement, after the uh company that we had bid them last time came out and looked at them and seen the actual, what they were gonna be working with, the bid actually increased up to eighty one. Plumbing repairs, uh at forty eight hundred dollars. This would be minimal repairs as far as getting the drains working, snaking them, trying to get them going without jetting them too hard because we're concerned about the shape of the pipes inside and under the ground. The urinals, this would relocate those to the proper height. Um it would also repair the shower leaks, uh the valves and those, and the heads are leaking. The drywall and tile, we would do that in-house with our own staff. Um and that would be for the urinals, right? So we'd have to remove the tile and the drywall so the plumbers could go in and relocate the pipes, and then we would reinstall uh matching tile and that on the wall to repair that. Uh kitchen appliances, after visiting them with UFA's representatives, uh we agreed that that would be a UFA responsibility. They're operating right now, they're old, but as they had one or two go out, they would replace those under their, their side of the contract. Uh total on the repairs would be roughly about twenty thousand dollars. And that is if, if things go smooth, if we don't have problems with those pipes under the ground or different things like that, we're gonna try to be as gentle as possible.
With the potential if the pipes go wrong?
Yeah, we could. There's always a potential that we could run into some issues as we start over.
How, how much do we think that that would end up costing us if that did go wrong?
I don't know. Um it, it could be as much as, you know, a few thousand dollars or very expensive, depending on the degree of repair.
I would chase it, right?
Yeah.
Monty, remind me on, on the window replacement, I know that, is that just replacing, was that actually adding some windows in?
That would just be replacing.
That's just replacing existing?
Yeah, so the existing windows have a lot of sill problems around the outside, they're leaking water through them. They're not energy efficient windows, so pulling the heat in or the air conditioning in is difficult, and so that would be a really good upgrade.
This would be, this is upgrading them to, to double pane standard, okay?
So uh then also with the recommendations that council gave us was to look into replacement options. And so uh we met with UFA and then met with their architect, the architect is AJC Architects. And uh Heber Slaber is the architect that we dealt with.
Says you.
He uh, he supplied us with these numbers right here. So UFA's moved in the direction of building a, what they call their small, small prototype fire station. It's a single story fire station that meets the needs of most areas. It's not a large station like one twenty-three. And is what they've done is they've moved in the direction of building these type of stations throughout all of the newer stations that they're putting in. Also removes the brass fire pole to slide down, which I thought that was sacrilege for a fire station to have that, we're admitting to be missing that, but um it's, it's a lot cheaper option and it meets their needs very well. Um that's what Chief Burchett uh recommended. Um so option one would be if that prototype will fit on the piece of property that we're looking at. If it does not, then option two is the direction, because it would take some redrawing and reconfiguring of space of the, about the same footprint to be able to fit it on.
So the ninety grand is, is engineering.
That's just the engineering cost, that's not the building cost.
And so uh you notice on the small prototype, two ninety-five is what they said the, their cost would be on that. Uh there's an additional fifty thousand in there for site survey, geotech, and fire flow, uh so grand total of three forty-five. Uh option two, the design would increase to three eighty-five, five seventy, fifty thousand again for site survey, geotech, and fire flow. Which would bring that total to four thirty-five, five seventy. We're hoping that the, the piece that we're looking at, that it'll fit. It's looking fairly good, but we're, we're having them do the study to make sure that it will fit and meet the needs for pull-through and everything.
And which, which piece of property is that that you're referring to?
The site that we're looking at right now is the piece over here on the public works site, the future public works site.
So this would be the, the new fire station for that site?
Um there is the other option of the other piece of property over on the boulevard.
Is that the one? Seven eleven, right?
Yes, yes. It's on the, it, it basically sits between two subdivisions. Um the downside to that piece is it's a little larger than what they normally would look for, and so there would be additional property in there that may not be used which cause, can cause other problems like weeds and things like that, unmaintained areas. Um the other thing is, is it sits right smack dab surrounded in the middle of subdivisions. And so with that type of operation, they prefer the other side over here where it's tied to the public works site. But there's always the other option, right?
I think the other side, with the public works yards, future placement works much better.
Makes sense to put it where we intend to put it, so.
Yeah, the other thing too is, is on the future public works site, um you've got the S road that cuts in there, and so there's a better availability to be able to pull the apparatuses around and bring them into the station, rather than having a longer, skinnier piece of property where the fire station sits in and you're trying to work around. Okay, so these, this is the schedule that we would be looking at. Schematic design would be about eight weeks. Design and development would be another six, and construction documents would be six. So roughly, we're looking at about a five month period to go through the design phase. And, and this is substantially shortened to what a normal design phase would be, because we're already working with basic designs that they've already built, they've already proven and how they would construct those. Estimated construction costs on this project would be about six point two.
Can I, can I ask an obnoxious question, and obviously not today, but will you give us, will you give us a breakdown of, of those estimated construction costs to understand? That six point two is composed, you've got this email.
Yeah, so, so right now, that's a little difficult to do, because this is just their estimate on what it would cost. And with inflation going like it's going, building materials and everything else, um that, that is an estimate, that all, that's all it is.
The reason I ask is that when we were talking about the dog park, we got some bad public pushback on the cost of the dog park. But then when we were able to say, here's the bid, here's, here's it broken down.
Yes.
And then it's a lot more palatable for people to understand, including myself, and so it would just be really helpful if we can have that idea.
And we're ways away from approving.
Right, but what, how are they estimating these? What, what went into that? Is, you know, just kind of that?
Yeah, so basically, this is the engineer's estimate, and so they take basic costs of what they've dealt with and they've applied them to what this structure would be. And that's where they come up with it. Um as you've known before, like when we built City Hall, we came in with construction estimates. Those can vary and those can also uh change over time, right? As, as we start going through the schematic design, develop, design development, and construction documents, they'll be able to nail that down a lot better, cause they'll have actual bids. At this point in the phase, we're just running off of this as an estimated cost of what this project would be. But as we, as we move forward, we will bring you more detailed breakdown. Okay, um I, I personally, looking at the, the old building, going through it, um taking a look at what our options are as far as repairs on that building, I highly recommend that we move towards replacing that building. I would, I just honestly can't say that we would be headed in the right direction if we pump up a bunch of money into a building that's literally falling apart and-
But does the twenty thousand, sorry, but there's the twenty thousand something that's in an urgent need and we need to take that and do that now to, to cover the gap between then and now?
Yeah, that's what Chief Burchett and uh Larson basically brought to our attention, that the, these items here would keep the crew feeling good about being able to live there. It would take care of a lot of their concerns about items they're having problems with, and it would buy them enough time to where they would, they would support holding off on any very high expenses to build it.
At least let three to four years out on a next station, so.
Uh depending, I mean, if we, if we put this on a fast track, I think we could get it moving in a year and a half, two years.
I think it's two years.
Even still, twenty thousand dollars to keep that place even, anything better than it is for two years is a good investment.
It's a permanently temporary building.
Yeah. And a lot of times with, with different things, fleet and facilities, as you start looking at what you should've been able to get out of your investment into those things, the city and UFA's got a lot of, a lot of return on their investment outside, so.
I've, I've got a question, and I, I think it's just a question that needs to be asked. Um in going through that discussion with UFA and identifying the, the needs that are there, had, was there any ask or any, I guess, ask of us or any offer of them to participate in any of these costs? Because certainly, these repairs didn't just happen overnight.
Yes.
Um they have been, they've been needed and, and been exacerbated for, for many years now. I, I've worked in a number of shifts at that station, I know all about it. Um but, but I can say that, again, those, we're in a position now, and again, I, I think it's just a question asked to be asked, we're in a position now because of our decision to leave the, the taxing entity, that we, we have responsibility for that station now. But that being said, the repairs and things that are needed, even though we've narrowed that scope considerably um to this point, again, they are not brand new issues. So has there been, was there any discussion or any, at least any ask on our part about potential participation for them in that?
Especially, especially say the kitchen cabinet part, right? Because that's more of an aesthetic, not an operation.
Well, it's, it's honestly, it's every bit of it. The plumbing has, has had issues for years.
But, but those are operational things that we have to do no matter what. I, I guess I'm just kinda drawing a, a line of-
Do we really need to reface?
What's operational, has to be done, and what makes them feel better, right?
Yeah.
But again, was, was there any discussion or any, uh, any question asked?
Yes, there was, and, and to be fair, uh both Chief Burchett and Larson Wood were both very, very open about it. They were the ones that came up and said, hey, the, the appliances is something that we could, that we could cover. Some of the guidelines that they're looking at, and uh Chase can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I understand it is now that we've taken over that building, it's more of a landlord tenant type of relationship as far as the contract's written. Um and I believe that they kept bringing up a five thousand dollar mark, that anything above five thousand dollars you're tied to like a landlord would be required to repair. Something that they are looking to us versus-
Again, though, that's a, that's a, that's a new item.
Yes.
Relatively new caveat that's been put in there with that basically landlord agreement, but again, looking back, these, some of these costs extend-
Probably should've been done a while.
Extend well be, well beyond when that agreement has been put in place.
Cause I think if we were going to be a, a, if I think a better term, if there was a traditional buying a property as a- For like a better term, if there was a traditional buying a property as a landlord. We would have expected certain number of repairs to have been performed before our purchase, right?
Yes.
So I I I think there's some validity to that point and. There's a, you know, like, I I mean appliances are great, that's, but but those can be moved to a new station too, if they're new appliances, right, I mean, that that's.
Um, the uh. You know, even in our conversations with them, they even expressed the same thing that they were. Station one oh three was on their list as one of their very next stations that they were looking to replace. And so their guys were, the crews were basically under the impression that we're buying our time, put up with all this stuff, these problems. We're not gonna pump money into this building and uh we're gonna build a new building, and so then when when we took over. Uh, ownership of it, it basically was up in the air, what what is Herman gonna do now? And so that's where these negotiations have been going.
I I. To to be fair, though, um, even on their timeline, I think it'd still be in that two year window from where we're at right now.
Yes, I see.
So would would they have come in and done these same repairs? Done these same upgrades to to buy them that two years, because again, even if we decide. That the best decision is to fast track it, I think we would be very close to the same timeline that they would have been on anyway, so the question is is. Again, would they have gone in and done these, invested the same amount of money in there with our with our crews, y- you know. Biding their time there, but at least investing this amount of money in there to to buy them that two years that they needed to complete that construction project.
So.
I agree, but.
So just to, this, I think this is a really important discussion, because what you're what you're essentially saying is. What amount of this price tag was already done before it was needed to us, is that kind of it?
Yep.
Just to set the expectation, our withdrawal agreement does state that it shall be conveyed as is, right? So there's no real contractual basis for us to go in and, in fact, there's one stating, you have no basis to come back to us and ask for that money. That doesn't mean that they can't try to contribute, right, and be and be good partners. I just wanted to, I I pulled it up just to make sure that it was in.
And again, I I completely under, I completely understand that. But in terms of fiscal responsibility to to our residents, you know. We are being asked to to put some money into a building that is purely temporary and and there's prob- and again, these aren't brand new problems. Um, there were certainly some of these that existed prior to the conveyance of that station as is to our possession.
And and if I could propose a possible solution there, I mean, uh, I I think the appliances is a great. Investment for them, because they can move those to a new station in two years and get, you know, great lifetime work out of those, right, so that's not a big thing. As far as, um, you know, window replacement, plumbing repairs, I, yeah, I think we have to take care of those just immediately, that's totally unsatisfactory. Um, um, but the, you know, kitchen cabinets reface, drywall and tile, if those are things that are. And the whole thing needs to be redone, so. Right, but if they're more um aesthetic things that are, you know, for morale, which is important, right? I mean, we don't want our firefighters staying in that place anyway, but. If we can make it better, I I I'm willing to have that conversation, perhaps we could split those costs of the drywall and the cabinets. You know, so they're investing in part of that as well.
Okay, just just so we're clear, we're not going in and fixing any of their tile. Stuff, the drywall, the urine tile is involved, we have to remove that wall for the plumbing repairs to be made, then we would have to replace.
Understood, okay.
And so that's not aesthetic in, by code, you're required to have a washable surface between, behind any uh bathroom facility.
Understood.
And so those, that eleven fifty is, it's part of the repairs for the the.
So I guess to Steve's question or point then, on the cabinets then, what is, what would a potential cost, I'm expecting you to note right off of, at least. Repairing the things that need to be repaired to make them functional, because obviously, in the pictures that were shown to us, there was some components of those that weren't functional. But what would the cost of at least making those repairs to make it functional be versus refacing all of those cabinets at at a higher expense?
Yeah.
Cause if, I mean, if that's my house. And I'm, and I know I'm gonna just tear it down in twelve to twenty four months, I'm not gonna drop six grand.
You're gonna put a few screws in and make the cabinet door for, yeah.
And we and we can definitely look in into that. And see where we're at as far as the cabinets, that that's something that I think we could give them a pushback on.
It's tough to nickel and dime, because that that is such a, an abomination, I mean. Having toured that facility, I don't, it's awful, it's awful, just just, there's no other way to say it. Um, and and it's it's beneath our first responders to have to be in a place like that, so. Um, I I don't have any real problems with this amount and and this investment.
Like say, I just was asking your question.
I think it's a reasonable question to ask, um, and if they say, you know, absolutely not. Maybe we figure out a different solution for the cabinets, but I would be supportive of everything else on there.
There's no doubt some of these things have to be done to bias that.
Gosh, it's.
Time.
I mean, I I think there's no question that anything that has to do with sanitation has to get done, and I don't think you're gonna get any pushback from this body to make that happen. Uh, the cabinets, other things, that's, you know, we can see what we can do, but I'm, let's get those. They gotta be able to have the sanitation facilities, that's gotta get taken care of.
I agree, sounds fair.
As a side note, we have a tour set up with South Jordan to tour their new station sixty four on June eighth at two thirty, if any of you are interested in something.
This one over here, yeah.
For anyone. No, no.
We sent, send it in, might just like.
Yeah, we sent it in.
Sure, yeah, we sent it.
I don't know, just send it.
So have we given you unclear instruction? Or what do you need from us?
I I would, I would just ask for your blessing to go ahead and continue with the. Moving forward with the design and making sure that that's gonna fit on that piece of property and taking a look at pushing forward to get that and then starting to get some. Better costs and a breakdown.
I think we need to, obviously, we need to have a broader discussion on the actual financing of that.
Yeah.
With our boring finance director.
I was not totally boring, I thought that was a good presentation last time.
Be clear that, be clear that ask is to is to authorize the three forty five or four thirty five?
Yeah, we can't, like, I'm, obviously, we can't authorize that right now.
We'll come back for approval on it, but.
And we all agree, we need to keep that project.
I don't wanna be running in one direction and then turn around and find.
I I am, I am in agreement that that the new site is, or the site on the public works is where it should go.
Prefer.
Uh, so, uh, at least in regards to all of that, I'm supportive of of moving that forward, especially.
I have a bit of a concern there, I mean, I I agree that I think it's the preferred site if all of that works out, but to me, that's still a big. If all of that works out.
What are you be concerned about?
What's the fiscal impact if we just have, it, cause there are programs pretty simple for an engineer's, but the footprint here, the footprint here. Like it can be done in a very small window of time.
It's not that easy.
So can they, can they um just look at both pieces and and show us both pieces, just say, yep, here's how it looks here, here's how it looks here, there's a process.
We could probably have them do that.
Was there a huge fiscal impact to us having one of those?
Well.
It should be fifty thousand dollars for that. It literally takes a few minutes.
Yeah, so right now, I wanna say, um, if my memory serves me right, they wanted sixty eight hundred dollars to. Be able to decide and run the footprint on the piece of property to verify that everything's gonna fit.
That's where that's needed.
That was for one piece of property, so I wanna say that if you're gonna have sequel pieces, it'd be a little more.
Now, we do ask what that is, just because it seems like it's pretty. And I don't mean to simplify it, but watch them do it too many times now, but if they have the blue, if they already know the schematics and everything in that building. They put like a man to the dimensions of a.
That software is expensive.
And we could put pickleball courts in.
I've already gotten a few emails, uh. If we don't put it. They probably should.
But maybe they could see a basketball court, yeah.
I don't know what UFA does anymore. Just so you know, though, just so it doesn't surprise you, I've already approved the sixty eight hundred because it fits in our part, but so.
So I think that's fine, but.
That's perfect, yeah.
Yes. But beyond that.
And that's and that's to determine on the, on the same twenty, twenty two percent of the cost.
Just obviously. My point is, is we just need to keep moving and figure out where it is. So I would, so I'm, I understand we're directing staff to continue moving forward with this process as they have so outlined and continue to bring it to us that we can keep.
And Sherry would, and we would take a look at the cost on either side, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important for us to understand.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Um, we are approaching the beginning of our next meeting, uh, so I would look for a motion from this body to uh recess and move the door down.
I'll move.
A second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank you for coming and joining us, we'll go in the other room.